I think you touched on it, but going forward, what's the timeline that we are dealing with for adoption and approval?
Yeah, so generally what will happen is every year, just to kind of recap, so you'll probably restart the whole CIP April usually is when you kind of have an initial conversation. Then you usually take the months of May and June to kind of re-update your numbers, look at any kind of reprioritization. That then goes into July where then you kind of take all of that, you update the document. August then is kind of your first draft review. And then what happens is after that opportunity of kind of reviewing and making any changes. We're then and now which is September, which is you'll have a draft that's kind of been approved by the staff or at least updated to the staff to their level. And then you essentially have kind of a month to kind of review everything, you know, generally we try to keep you involved in August so that it isn't such like, man, this is the first time you're seeing this. But then what will happen in October then is we'll be asking you to adopt the latest version. And that information then is what then correlates into the budget that they use then to try to kind of play that off.
Yeah, I guess the other part of that question is, is this a yearly exercise?
Yes.
Because that's, and that's what I want everybody to hear because that's, this isn't a document that you build it and forget it.
This is the last thing you want to do is just put this on the shelf and say you're done. This should be constantly every year evolving and kind of almost a list for the administrator and even the staff to know. Okay, I remember now that this broke and we had to fix it, so we paid for that, I can take that off, I could move it there. That's the point of this is it's constantly every year you're looking at. You know, generally in July is when you kind of look at your policies, so there is a capital improvement policy that you guys approved. You can update that every year if there's things you want to change. Same thing where that then kind of goes into if you want to formally set a, you know, debt policy that's related to your CIP. You can do that and then the staff essentially goes in here and kind of cuts that off or you have options. But yes, this should be every year, this kind of becomes an update, the goal is essentially to get it to the staff that they can do it. But one of the ways kind of our agreement works is if they don't have the time, I can basically come in and help them do it. So that option was there.
What particularly?
As far as how did we come up with those numbers? So that was conversations with staff, so what we, when we went through the process, generally what we asked them to do is for years 2025 and 2026, usually your first two years of your CIP. We asked them to try to get quotes, so what is the current market showing for these costs? When you get to 2027, 2028, 2029, some of that is, you know, we do ask, they try to get a quote. But then we'll either add in an inflationary number or it essentially is an estimate because that's where we're far out. The market could go up, it could go down, we don't know, but generally what all of these numbers have came from is a source somewhere. So they either looked at a current estimate of where they're getting costs. And really that's what 2025 is showing is that was either from an invoice or particularly they know that this has been either quoted or budgeted for that amount. And then as it goes on, we try to stick to that or apply some form of an assumption that makes sense.
Yeah, so that's a really good question, so and part of that is the purpose of this document is hopefully to evolves to a point where.
You know, depending on, we've started to work with municipalities who are in that scenario where they're like, we can't keep borrowing X amount of dollars. So some of that comes down to a future policy discussion is okay, when it comes related to capital improvement. Is there a threshold that essentially you want to be at for borrowing? And so for an example, when we worked with the city of Kewanee to work on their capital improvement plan. We did this where we threw everything in there and they kind of saw it. And then it furthered conversations of there's no way we're going to be able to fund everything that's in there. So what happened then is we started to work with them and said, all right, what we're going to do then is you're going to go out and borrow for two years. And essentially come with a $500,000 cap. So that is now your goal, so now when you look at your CIP, you essentially have all these projects and you can kind of pick and choose. Okay, how do you want to rework your CIP? Do you want it to be as, you know, there's, there's different ways you can do your CIP, so if you want it to be more structured as 100% as your budget. We can do that where we could rework it where once we know where that cap is, we then start shifting projects to future years. Otherwise you look at this and truly what is, you know, what should be replaced or what can. And then you have the internal conversation of we have a debt limit policy that now is this. So then when you go to the budget, that starts, so that's kind of how we did it in Platteville. In Platteville, we had a full CIP which had every project that we could do. But then when we went to the budget conversation, we knew there was a line. And so then we would show them, okay, here's what our CIP says we should be doing. This gets us to project number 47, we've got 20 other projects that are still on here. So then it just became the rationale, okay, what do you want to do? Are there specific projects under that list that you want to move up? That becomes a policy discussion for you guys as the council is, you know, we really think this is a priority, staff kind of has the same opportunity, you know. DPW can say, look, I understand that this road is here, but I feel it should be here. And that then becomes kind of the budgetary process, so that's kind of how it flows usually. But again, as, as this document evolves, you can tweak it or change it however you want.
I think the most important thing it does is it brings visibility to all of these projects because instead of each time we sit down and then Jeff says, oh, we're going to have to do this. Or the library is going to do something or we have something that's coming up for the building here. Having this as a template that we can use when it comes to budget time. Each time you come to a budget, it's mostly been, how do we make everything fit? Well, instead of, instead of actually having a, you know, a thoughtful process that lets us decide. Can we do this? Should we do this? When can that fit in? So having us, I, I'm, I'm happy we're getting this far along because it's a, it's a really valuable tool for us. Because we don't know much, what is really what it comes down to. And I don't think it's, it's nothing that's different, I think it was tuned up a little bit from our meetings that we had.
It should be primarily what you saw with just a couple of tweaks and changes and either upping the price or adding in a project that you requested.
What particularly?
As far as how did we come up with those numbers? So that was conversations with staff, so what we, when we went through the process, generally what we asked them to do is for years 2025 and 2026. Usually your first two years of your CIP, we asked them to try to get quotes. So what is the current market showing for these costs? When you get to 2027, 2028, 2029, some of that is, you know, we do ask, they try to get a quote. But then we'll either add in an inflationary number or it essentially is an estimate because that's where we're far out. The market could go up, it could go down, we don't know, but generally what all of these numbers have came from is a source somewhere. So they either looked at a current estimate of where they're getting costs. And really that's what 2025 is showing is that was either from an invoice or particularly they know that this has been either quoted or budgeted for that amount. And then as it goes on, we try to stick to that or apply some form of an assumption that makes sense.
I think you touched on it, but going forward, what's the timeline that we are dealing with for adoption and approval?
Yeah, so generally what will happen is every year, just to kind of recap, so you'll probably restart the whole CIP April usually is when you kind of have an initial conversation. Then you usually take the months of May and June to kind of re-update your numbers, look at any kind of reprioritization. That then goes into July where then you kind of take all of that, you update the document. August then is kind of your first draft review. And then what happens is after that opportunity of kind of reviewing and making any changes. We're then and now which is September, which is you'll have a draft that's kind of been approved by the staff or at least updated to the staff to their level. And then you essentially have kind of a month to kind of review everything, you know, generally we try to keep you involved in August so that it isn't such like, man, this is the first time you're seeing this. But then what will happen in October then is we'll be asking you to adopt the latest version. And that information then is what then correlates into the budget that they use then to try to kind of play that off.
Yeah, and I guess the other part of that question is, is this a yearly exercise?
Yes.
Because that's, and that's what I want everybody to hear because that's, this isn't a document that you build it and forget it.
This is the last thing you want to do is just put this on the shelf and say you're done. This should be constantly every year evolving and kind of almost a list for the administrator and even the staff to know. Okay, I remember now that this broke and we had to fix it, so we paid for that, I can take that off, I could move it there. That's the point of this is it's constantly every year you're looking at. You know, generally in July is when you kind of look at your policies, so there is a capital improvement policy that you guys approved. You can update that every year if there's things you want to change. Same thing where that then kind of goes into if you want to formally set a, you know, debt policy that's related to your CIP. You can do that and then the staff essentially goes in here and kind of cuts that off or you have options. But yes, this should be every year, this kind of becomes an update, the goal is essentially to get it to the staff that they can do it. But one of the ways kind of our agreement works is if they don't have the time, I can basically come in and help them do it. So that option was there.
Scott, you have a question?
Prepare to prioritize these starts.
So prioritization is essentially when we start, you know, one is a kind of, it's a brand new project or it's something that it goes one through five, but it's reversal. So five is essentially this thing needs to be fixed, it needs to be updated, so normally what happens is.
I'm sorry, I didn't mean to interrupt, but I want to clarify my question.
Yeah.
You have 57 projects.
Yes.
Now you need to prioritize all 57, right, as you said earlier, your number 76 on the list. I read this, we're 86 pages today and I didn't really catch where the, where the priority piece went in, so is that during a budget season? When, when does the target?
So the priority is if you look at every single project, so the project description, there's a section up in the right hand corner that has, it's the fourth one down that says priority. And you'll see it's graded one through five. So five is essentially, it needs to be replaced now. So normally what you're going to see is whatever has made it to kind of the top level of that year should usually be the one. Now sometimes you may see it being a three or a two because it's something that kind of joins together and makes sense. But normally when we're kind of working with the staff in June and kind of the May and June. That's where they're kind of ranking their priorities, so when they go back into next year's CIP. It's possible that something that was in there potentially as a three has now elevated to a five and vice versa. So they may kind of take the first crack, usually a staff as well as, you know, DPW, okay. What roads do you feel are on the list that need to be replaced in 2025? And normally that's kind of some of the philosophy discussions, how do you get to be less that? It's typically based on Pazer would be my, my guess is how you guys are currently doing that and some of the conversations that we had. It's the worst Pazer ratings are the ones that are higher up. Or it potentially also could be depending on the need, so if it's something on, you know, your main street that now has a hole in it, that may be a higher priority than one of your roads that truly is rated less, but it's how further that has less track. So a lot of that kind of occurs in the development of it and then when we get to the meetings in August. That's kind of an opportunity for the finance committee and then also the council now has the opportunity to look at it and go. I think this project should be prioritized higher or if there's something in 2026, they can kind of make those discussions and then we kind of look at them, tweak the point. they can kind of make those discussions and then we kind of look at them, tweak the point.
It doesn't quite go far enough because you have five departments that have a high priority item. Which of those is number one in the city's? Right? So may I run several types of typical type of systems like this? And so you have, you have an installation that has their priorities. Now you have twelve installations, they all have a priority one. Now the council or the leadership has this still racked and stacked that one through twelve. So where does that?
So that essentially, right. So once you take, so if this is adopted as it is, when they go then to the actual budgetary adoption of the capital improvement, that's when you hit that point is you're going to take all those projects in twenty twenty five and essentially miss them. And either it's, you hope that you can do them all, but if you can't, that starts the conversation then of everybody saying, all right, you've got five projects that are a five. We've now hit the cutoff list. It, I want to say it's kind of ordering the trading, but sometimes that it does happen. Whereas, okay, we want to make sure that every single department has a project that's done. So it may then force some of those, you know, if G B W has five fives and library has two, well, library still needs that project stuff. So it's kind of that conversation of that's the give and take that then the council has an opportunity to kind of play with that. The ultimate end decision is the ability to say what is, becomes the higher priority or what doesn't kind of trade them.
It also, it also gives you with, with this document, then you can also say this has to slip. And so you have a place to put it.
You see where that.
And you can see where it goes and that push out, you know, there's a ripple all the way down to, to decide. So there's almost like a, it's like what you're getting at. There's, there's got to be a star priority for the projects that have to get done and the bad news is some that seem a high priority can't fit based on funding or capabilities or whatever it is. Yeah. At least we have a tool to give us the ability to move it around a little bit.
So I, a couple of questions. Potential ninety thousand dollar expenditure for the airport. However, I believe that most of that is a ninety percent, ninety ten. Is that reflected in place?
Yes. So let me get to the So generally what we have done with that is whatever the cost is, is split up between, it's usually two, so I got to get to.
State and local.
Yes. So essentially what it's showing is where we talked about those other sources of funding. So when you get to each individual project, it's going to show there whatever the total at, you know, the, basically the expenditure. And then in the funding source, it's going to have what is the city's responsibility? What is the state's? And then what is the federal? And the state and federal, I believe we combined and put those in as other sources. So that.
That's not in the real most example.
It's, it's not in, it's in the individual project. So we.
Examples for the way.
Just showing you the sewer utility, but if you go to the individual project for the airport.
Which is. We have a filing department also. Forty four, but we pay less than fifty percent of, of that. And I have no idea what's in that four forty four, but and the library, as far as I know, we don't budget anything for the library capital equipment. That all comes, the library does that, right?
So the one project that's in there is bookshelves and what that is being split is between the friends essentially doing their donation and then it's the request essentially for the city to pick up the.
Well, we don't usually do that, do we?
You could choose to include us in your capital improvement plan. So you can choose to fund this project.
Cause you have your capital improvement plan, right?
Yes, we do have a fund and we just spent ninety thousand on all the new bookshelves that we just got yesterday.
Thanks.
But it was something to put in there for a C I P because it's something we'd like to do eventually and we want to do it and get it on your radar that maybe it's, is it something that you allocate a little bit each year and we know that we're setting that aside until we have enough to purchase the bookshelves instead of saying to you one year. We normally ask you for two hundred thousand. This time we're going to ask you for two hundred and eighty because we really want those bookshelves. So it's, it's a way to upcoming. That might be on your plate.
Yeah. So to answer your question about the airport, so one of the projects, just as an example, was the construction snow removal equipment building. So the expenditure is eight hundred thousand dollars and then the funding sources, how that's being broken out is a grant of seven hundred and twenty thousand. And then the split between what is the city's responsibility and other sources is forty forty. So that's your fifty fifty split. So that's how we've kind of broken out each of those individual airport projects to show what's your B A A funding and then what is the state and your responsibility? So although yes, the total expenditure is in there, what actually then is being truly the responsibility would be levy of only forty thousand dollars is what would be added to the levy if you were to fund that.
I just have a comment. Can I make a comment? I was just going to comment that we reviewed this because circumstances within the city and the needs of the city year by year, like for example, God forbid, we had a natural disaster flooding or tornado or something like that, that would pretty much throw a lot of this out the window. Even that much further. I think ultimately though, the decisions are up to the city council with the information gathered from our consultants and our staff and public input.
Thank you very much.
For sure.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Item number four, premises amendment for ECO Equity Community Partners liquor license.
Yes. So ECO Equity, which is the engine room building, has a liquor license through the city right now. They would like to rent out their kitchen space to another organization. I spoke with the alcohol enforcement agents and I was told that in order for them to rent out their kitchen space, they need to amend their premise of their liquor license to remove the kitchen from the liquor license premise, basically. With doing that, that will allow them to rent out their kitchen. That entity can sell the food and make the proceeds off of the food and ECO Equity will be making the proceeds off of the alcohol. So the, essentially the entity that will be operating out of the kitchen cannot make money off of the liquor license. So they can't collect the liquor license funds, which is why the premise needs to be amended to remove the kitchen to allow them to rent it and operate out of there. And then ECO Equity will continue to operate with the liquor license portion of it. They can share the seating area. So it's just that they're removing the kitchen from the premise of the liquor license.
That was a question, looking at the, the rough layout that they had is do you have to have a demarcation? You know, there's you know, they can share seating. I guess it would be a matter of, is it complicated? Because a server goes to the table, who does it represent?
No, they don't care about that as long.
Cause you're going to two different entities.
Well, the biggest thing is the foundation entity had profit off of the liquor license. So they can't collect the funds off of the liquor license. So the liquor license premise has to be amended to remove that kitchen to allow them to operate, but they can share a seating area and other organizations have used this structure also. And this is how, this is basically the recommendation of the enforcement agent was to do it this way. And they don't actually have like a premise amendment form. So I just had them fill it out on the application and then.
Yeah, I saw the fancy highlighting at the top.
They can also, just for general information, they can also put the liquor and the food on the same bill. So you pay one bill at the, but it has to be.
To go that route, it has to be ECO Equity collecting everything and then the, the other entity would then adopt it on the back end, basically.
I don't know that we have to approve that, do we?
The premise amendment you need to. Yes.
Okay, so motion. Or, well, we could have a motion first, then. I would move to approve so we can move to discussion. There a second?
A second, that's.
Okay, motion is made and seconded to approve the premises amendment for equal, ECO Equity Community Partners. Now, is there other discussion?
So I have some questions. What happens if we don't approve this? What is their business plan at that point?
I have not been informed of any business plan if this is not approved. Essentially, after we found out that this was kind of happening, I had a meeting with them, talked with the enforcement agents and figured out a way to try and make it so that they could operate this way without violating any laws. So I have not been informed of any other business plan other than this.
So if we deny this, are we? I mean, I guess it's just maybe an opinion or judgment call. We're going to be putting them out of business.
Um, it would prevent, it would prevent them from moving forward with the kitchen, people being able to rent that space and operate out of there and off of that part of it.
But there's been no mention made to anyone either informally or formally that they're going to be doing the restaurant portion themselves.
You mean ECO Equity?
Yes.
I have not been informed of anything.
Okay, that's what I wanted to know.
There's going to be the, on the amendment. There's listed who is going to be taking the kitchen or the kitchen part. So that will be.
Yeah, no kitchens will be included. So that it's removing because the current.
Completely.
Currently, the premise includes the kitchen. So it's just removing the kitchen area specifically. And I included the lease to verify that the lease is only for the kitchen area also.
Do we have any, any legal advice on any implications of this at all? I'm thinking, okay, so the kitchen area is removed. Then, you know, is, is there going to be, okay, so now there's plans for this restaurant to come in and serve there. If they don't make a go of it, then there would be another restaurant. So this is kind of pretty much what it has turned into.
E- essentially what this would do was it would separate that kitchen space off for any different kitchen to operate out of there. Or for them to operate out of there in the future with no alcohol in there. So it would just restrict alcohol from that area essentially for all purposes. They could choose to say next year when they reapply for their license, they could choose to amend their premise or choose to try and amend their premise in between if they wanted to add it back in. But this came directly from the enforcement agents for the state of Wisconsin were the ones that told me to do it this way based off of what they've seen and what they would recommend.
And I don't, I don't, you know, whoever, I mean, I think ask McDonald's to come down and serve hamburgers, a little kitchen. Of what business would that be of ours necessarily? None. As long as they're following the liquor license, that's what we have the, the. But anyway, I didn't step my foot off.
Sorry about that. Well, I think at this, this point in the year, it's, you know, we can, we can do this without, you know, a lot of, you know, really doing a lot of change. I don't know how this is going to affect them going forward. You know, this is, appears to be an attempt to keep solvent, keep it working. Well, it comes up again, you know, for approval and and is that the coming in again? So I don't know.
And, and sure, and I know that is that they have a requirement that they be open for business a hundred and fifty days a year.
I don't know if that's the only thing. I know that's one of the parts of our ordinance. I don't know.
If they're not open a hundred and fifty days. So I think this, you know, this allows them the time to be open a hundred and fifty days. If it gets to, if it gets to five months before July first, then, and they have no possibilities, then I think there's, you know.
My understanding is they would like to start functioning as soon as possible this way. And they do plan to be open. The people running the kitchen have experience in the food industry. So they have their suppliers already lined up. They have all of that stuff figured out.
Well, I mean, I, I don't want to be, you know, like we're responsible for putting them out of business. On the other hand, you know, I do think that, you know, how it was presented at the license, things haven't, for whatever reasons, haven't really turned out that way. And, you know, we want, want to give them a chance to be successful, but I, I guess for, you know, how long is it going to be like this? I guess we don't know.
And there are businesses that operate solely this way. So.
You know, I, I don't, I appreciate what you're saying. There's certainly very much for public comment regarding that. On the other hand, neither do I drive the nails in the coffin. So I, I guess my thought is that, you know, if this will work for them, and this will soon enough know that business has not been very forthcoming with doing anything that they've said they were going to. However, this one looks like it might have a chance. And if it doesn't, you know, hot water, regardless, so.
And still liquor license would still be there.
Yeah. Oh, yes, yes. Yep, yep. So I'm called a question. All right. You've heard the question. We've heard the discussion. I'm favoring by all of them.
Ben Summerin.
Yes.
Marx.
Yes.
Dunkinson.
Yes.
Elkin.
Yes.
You know, so I passed. Item number five, best of city funds.
I guess I provided you with our most recent Wisconsin statement and just an overview of the rates that I pulled off of the credit union's website. Roger, I don't know if you had anything else.
We had a discussion, you know, so basically if you look at the, the Wisconsin credit union statement here, we've, we've got one point five million dollars that we we need to get a better interest rate on. And, and our discussion and or the recommendation was break that up a little bit.
Two, yeah.
And.
Staggered periods.
I think the discussion also said no more than twelve months. Might be wrong.
The motion didn't specify. It's, it just said what was the best interest of the city.
Yeah. So, so I, I think the discussion was doing like that. You know, if you look at it, at, at this, the, the six months and the twelve month and the eighteen month are all four percent. And so, you know, our recommendation maybe would be to, to break that up between six month and twelve month.
That's what I would recommend. And I wouldn't recommend, because the statement has the full amount of the money market, but I would recommend doing like seven fifty to one and seven fifty to the other or something like that and leaving some money still in that account.
It's, it's fluid.
Yeah.
So you're always going to be looking at.
You have a motion?
Yes.
I will make a motion to invest the Wisconsin Credit Union Fund into a six month.
Do you want to specify the amount?
It's a dollar amount. Seven fifty?
Yep, yep, seven fifty.
Seven fifty each?
Yep.
Wait a second. Second. Motion is made and seconded to put seven hundred and fifty thousand dollars in each of a six month and a twelve month certificate deposit at a rate of four percent. And for the discussion? All in favor, say aye. All in favor say aye. Aye. Opposed? Served. It costs us a almost a percent by. I I think I think this is probably a good time to to get that taken care of, cause I am. Confidence that it's gonna remain as high as it is.
We'll pay four percent.
Yeah, I think so. Um, okay, job description, city administrator. Frank.
Uh, you you guys discussed this at the last meeting, uh, you just need a motion to approve or amend.
I I make a motion, um, that we amend the job description under primary duties, number six. Reed shall prepare the annual city budget, then coordinating and providing guidance guidance. To department heads, so six would read as is. With the addition of at the beginning, shall prepare the annual city budget. I think that um, I would like to see personally see it clarified. That the administrator is the one who has the job responsibilities of preparing and administering the budget.
So could you, could you use your um, comment again? Yes, I just found the.
That with the amendment under primary duties, number six, to read, shall prepare. Annual city budget and then pick up coordinating and providing guidance to department heads. And the preparation, so what I'm really doing is adding about five words.
So, yeah, I. I think that's okay. Yeah, actually, it's better to say that somebody's some a position is responsible for and then coordinates.
I guess you moved that.
Yes.
So does somebody wanna second?
Second then. Okay. You wanna read that sentence back to?
Uh, Fran moves to amend number six to shall prepare annual city budget, um. Co- and coordinates and provides guidance to the whole thing that's there. It's just to add. She moves to amend number six to add shall prepare annual city budget beginning. To the one that's already on there.
So this is not, this is very. Yep. We've heard your amendment. Any further discussion? Uh, favor the right amendment, seeing if I raise aye. Served. And now the document itself.
I make a motion to approve the administrator job description as represented. With the addition of the previously motioned upon amendment.
Second then.
Second, any further discussion? All in favor say aye. Aye. First, so ordered. Item number seven, city administrator recruiting process and planning.
Um, we talked about this at the last meeting as well, um. You do have in front of you, uh, it's like two proposals from public administration associates. That provided each council member. I mean, if you look at, I think their proposal starts at basically, I think at page eighteen and goes through twenty five. Uh, uh, couple of items there, uh, just to synopsize for those in the. You know, the public, there's about, it's a twelve step process, uh, takes about four months to complete. Uh, under their more formal traditional uh, programming. Uh, if you wanted to modify the program, yeah, you basically save in two weeks. According to the the document they had before you, uh, uh. That's currently, uh, yeah, the other issue is that when you stay with the full formal program. If the if the city does hire, uh, sit when the city, cause. That's a bloody mistake here, uh, when the city does hire an administrator and that's like. It it doesn't work out under the formal plan, there's a one year guarantee where they'll come back and do it primarily at no cost. If you go the modified route, uh. Uh, there there is not that guarantee and I think they kind of, it kind of minimizes a lot of the, uh. In my opinion, it minimizes a lot of the uh, ability of the. Council and mayor to be involved in the press, uh, totally involved in the press. So if you wanted a recommendation, and we can talk about some of the steps and you can modify some of the items within the programming itself. I'd recommend you go with the full.
I I completely agree.
Versus going one phase.
I don't see that it saves us much in 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 time or and I would hate to say that we left something on the table. I I would rather that we. Um, picked on for doing too thorough a job instead of not.
A whole lot easier to.
Yeah.
Be interesting to see. We basically are are gonna end up with the same candidates, no matter.
Fair enough.
Possible.
Yeah, true. Same ones, yeah, probably, but but I think the the uh, full process is. It's it's a difference of, uh, what about five thousand dollars? Um, that's pretty much because.
You know, you might wanna add another thousand to the modified version, cause you were talking about. You don't really have to do that at this point. You can, but you have, it's not really necessary at this moment. And when I talk with Mr. Brunner and a couple of the other associates, you know, uh, when you do meet with the them. I mean, I'll call him tomorrow, uh, when you do meet with them, uh. You know, you can talk about this various steps and how sophisticated you want or how not sophisticated you want to to go. I know, you know, on this, in in this, in this program and. Uh, one of the things I think that would benefit Amy is when they do the uh. Community profile, usually they'll either have the mayor or some representatives. Do the narration, it's about a five minute, seems like it's, I think it's about a five minute video. You might think that's easy, but when you start talking for five minutes. Stumbling, you know, it kind of gets to be, it it takes some, it takes some time, effort and analysis to to put that together and they're pretty good at helping you. And uh, they have had a contact, uh, just off the record, there's been some people, uh, within the. Yeah, within the area that have contacted PAA about the position.
Um, I would move that we would uh, take option one, which is the full recruitment selection process. For fifteen thousand five hundred dollars.
I second it.
Motion is made and seconded to approve or uh, optional rule of the city administrator recruiting process and planning. Is there any further discussion?
I would just ask that we um. That we know it, uh, so the public is aware of how we're going to pay for it. In the budget that we'll be paying for it from our undesigned funded balance. Unless we can come up with the money somewhere else.
Well, since we haven't had it in Australia for several months, we should have that much in the uh. In the wages, I think, so. Said if, and if we, unless we can cover it somewhere else, so.
Right, yeah.
Usually we should have enough of that, because of the window, you potentially have enough money in that line.
Yeah.
And if there's not, I'm not donating.
No, but you're going on vacation, so.
Alright, we heard the motion, all in favor say aye. Aye. Opposed? Served. Item number eight, I move to a turn.
I second that.
Motion is made and seconded, all in favor say aye. Yeah, thank you.